Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
President.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thank you. Any additions, counsel, to the agenda? We'll move to our consent agenda where we have approval of the minutes from the June 25th council meeting. Approval of the June 29th payroll of $151,507.42. We have a resolution of employment for Park and Recreation. I'll speak about that in just a second. Resolution of employment in the Fire Department. Approval of the -- for liquor license for the Book House in Fairfield. Approval of claims in the amount of $617,953.06, of which Drisc construction at $84,090.07, Hickey Contracting Corp., $84,936.86, and Ideal Energy at $112,392.63 are above our $75,000 amount for reportable claims. The employment resolution for Park and Rec is -- reflects the budgeted increase for those two employees at Park and Rec that was not included in the salary resolution that we did two weeks ago. So, we've put those on separately for you. And if there are any questions, Aaron could take those. I don't see Calvin. If there aren't any, go ahead.
Is this a resolution, then, that's -- it's just something that would be filed along with what we've already done? I mean, recorded in the same place and kept with the same records?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
The reason that those wages are different than what just the annual appropriation was is because they are taking on more responsibilities as far as managing summer help and stuff rather than Calvin doing it or having somebody else do it. So, they're in charge of a little bit more responsibility, which is why they were getting a little bit more of a raise.
Okay.
Any other questions on the consent agenda items, counsel? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson, second by, is it Gandy?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Paul?
That'll be quick.
So, you were the original second?
I said nothing.
I'll give my second to her if she wants it.
I heard a man's voice to my right.
It doesn't matter.
What's that? All right, second by Flornoy. We'll get you on the next one, Paul. Please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay. Next, counsel, we'll move to our resolution action items and ordinances. We have contracts for both the city engineer, Melanie Carlson, and also our city administrator, Aaron Quaker. And the -- both of their contracts were written within the last year and essentially will expire at the end of this, at the fiscal year, June 30th. So, this will be a renewal for the coming fiscal year for 2018-19. The contracts have not changed essentially. They've been reviewed by our city attorney. John, any comments on those? No?
No.
But...
One little adjustment on the resolution.
Okay. But we will just simply put these forward to continue for the next fiscal year. So, entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the extension of the city engineer contract.
Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Gandy. Yeah, it was a second. You were going to be in there. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will those oppose the same sign? Thank you. And then a motion to approve the resolution for the contact -- contract extension for the city administrator.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will those oppose the same sign? Okay, thank you. This, counsel, we have the third and final reading, and this will be for the ordinance that divides the revenues between the taxing bodies that are agreeing to the TIF and urban renewal plan on Highway 1 and 34 bypass the urban renewal plan. So, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time and have to ask if there is any public comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the ordinance for the third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, move to the mayor's report. And a couple of items, counsel, I just wanted to report that we are in contact with Confluence on getting started, getting the process started for our comprehensive plan. I think they have been doing a little bit of data gathering. Melanie, I don't know whether much -- have they requested much from you at this point yet? Okay. So, that should begin pretty quickly. We did go over a list of representatives traditionally that formed the advisory council or committee that they wanted us to put together. So, this is a partial list of representatives that you all received a copy of for the comprehensive plan advisory committee that I would seek your approval for. City of Fairfield representatives would be our city administrator, Aaron, myself, city engineer, Melanie, our zoning officer, Scott Vaughn, park and rec director, Calvin Todd, one council member, that was Councilman Thompson, who's agreed to serve, our planning and zoning chair, Jim Horus. I've invited Anna Bruin from the Board of Adjustment, and I was also with Pathfinders. I think that would be a good combination of experience there for the process. Our city clerk, Rebecca. And then our community representatives thus far, Stephen Pedrick, who has represented representation from French Rentecor Local Business, but also is the president of the Trails Council, Gene Greco, Aaron Caness, and Josh Larrabee. There are a handful of others that I'm still in the business community, manufacturing community, that I'm just waiting for some replies. But I would seek your approval on this list. And then, at the next meeting, probably have the final members that we would ask for approval. At that point in time, they would set their first meetings for sometime in August. I asked Chris Squires about a special session with the council. He said yes, likely do that in Phase Two, which would be sometime in the fall. So, we would set up a separate work session for the council regarding the issues and objectives for the plan. So, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the names that have been given tonight.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will those oppose the same sign? Okay, motion carries. Counsel, I'd mentioned at the last meeting that FIDA and the city of Fairfield have been in discussions about an economic development conference. And Josh isn't here tonight, but I have the invitation letter that he has provided. And this is essentially going to be an economic development planning process around agricultural and food-based businesses with good expertise from Tara Johnson, who is -- has run and also helped to guide and fund food-based businesses. She's worked with communities on branding as well, and it's one of the discussions that we'll have within the conference as well, is the -- is developing a Fairfield brand for some of the value-added food items that are produced. The conference is called Boot Camp for a Town. Tara is associated with University of Wisconsin Extension's Food Finance Institute. So, this is going to take place later in the month. We've -- we're asking at this time for $1,000 to be one of the sponsors for the conference. I'm making this request that it would come out of local option. Rebecca and I reviewed what we have now. We don't have an exact number on the balance, but based on receipts in June and what we should be carrying over between $10,000 and $15,000 in a balance. So, that would be the request for the funding.
I'd move approve. I think it's something that, from a community standpoint, we're trying to do all we can that creates local option, local option options. And this helps add to that.
Thank you.
I'd move approve that.
Second.
Moved to approve by Thompson, second by Anderson. Any other questions or discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will those oppose the same sign? Okay. Motion passes. That's everything for my report. We'll move to our committee reports, public safety and transportation.
We met tonight at 5:00. Coming off of our Fourth of July week, we had a lot of -- handful of vocal citizens unhappy with the fireworks that were being discharged before the Third and Fourth, which are the allowable days, and outside of the times that are allowed, and requested the city council consider an all-out ban. We discussed that. Yes, other cities in Iowa have moved in that direction, but we felt that that won't solve the issue. People would still launch them even with -- if it were banned. We want to give our recently amended ordinance a chance to settle in and see what happens next year. So, no action on that. Along the same lines, some citizens asked if we would restrict the sale of fireworks. State law does not allow cities to ban the sale of fireworks within state limits, but some cities have made the restrictions so tight that it essentially banned them. So, they basically say that they can't be sold in commercial areas, only sold in manufacturing zone districts, which pushes them away from retail areas. Again, the committee had no interest in looking at that at this point in time. Article I read said that oftentimes when cities or states allow fireworks after a period of time of not allowing them, year one, there's a certain amount of interest and certain amount of participation. Year two generally goes up from year one, and then there's a drop-off after that. So, Fire Chief Vaughn said he spoke to a number of vendors. He said they weren't making any money. Their fees for renting the space in the parking lot, they have to move everything inside a trailer every night, move it back out. It's just not a very profitable business. So, we're going to wait and see what happens in 2019 before considering any action. So, again, no action on that one. Melanie Carlson, our city engineer, wanted to get this process started for choosing an engineer for the Highway One project. This is not required by law, but she figures it's a big enough project that we should go through the process of formally selecting an engineering firm. So, she wanted a volunteer from the committee to be on a selection committee. And I said I would do that if formally -- if we could formally act on it, which I didn't realize this was on our agenda. So, John, if it's on our agenda that we had this meeting, can we take action on an item from the agenda?
Yeah, we do that all the time.
Yeah, because I was making sure. The earlier version did not show the Public Safety Transportation Committee under the report. So, you just make an action item that I would be the committee member on the Highway One Project Engineering Selection Committee. Suppose I can...
I would support Michael being on that committee.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will those oppose the same sign?
I'll abstain. I'm voting for myself. So, the idea is that this is a pretty specific issue. We're going to, you know, get -- put out an RFQ, get some feedback, and make a decision. And then after that, there'll be another committee that'll really dive down into this project a little bit more and interface with the public about the steps of it. It's a big project, so that's the first step. The next item, this was brought up by a citizen in town who operates a drone company and is fully licensed to do so. Apparently, in Iowa, to be a licensed drone operator, you actually have to be a licensed pilot.
Yes.
So, they're considered, you know, a flying object. And so, you have to know all the ins and outs of piloting. And he was concerned that there are a number, a growing number of people who fly drones, either commercial, for commercial purposes, for filming movies, or just for fun, that may not be familiar with the federal and state law. So, this isn't anything about us adding further restrictions. It was just basically a question for our police chief. You know, are their officers familiar enough to deal with issues? And he said, yes, they are. So, we felt that the city was doing its due diligence. If the press wanted to cover such a topic, that would be up to them. But essentially, when you buy a drone, there's a form inside that you have to register it. And then, you're supposed to take it upon yourself to understand the rules and regulations, including not flying them within certain distance of airports without permission from the airport, et cetera. So, no action from the committee on that one. Next item was the deer depredation hunt. We reviewed the three ordinance examples that were provided to us by Greg Harris of the Department of Natural Resources, and two were one-sentence additions to the code. They referenced the state code, and because the state code and the DNR manage all the details, there's no reason for the city to necessarily get into the details about allowing. It just says that it's under the same area of the code. It says you can't launch missiles or throw bricks or anything like that. And it says except for, there would be allow hunting of deer with a bow and arrow on private property. And then it references the state. So, licensed and whatever you have to do to get that license and all that still apply, but it simplifies the process for the city to allow it with essentially a one-sentence amendment to the ordinance. So, committee decided we move forward. I guess we can bring that to the council and make a motion to move forward on drafting such an ordinance. I know I do this. I kind of like ask for permission before we do an ordinance, but it's kind of like, well, why would we waste the time on doing it if we weren't interested in it? So, I'll make a motion that we move forward with drafting such an ordinance for city council review.
Still moved.
Moved by Hallie, second by Anderson.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will those oppose the same sign?
All right. Two more items. Sidewalk projects. This was something I've been doing in my free time, was using Google Earth to find areas in town where there are no sidewalks on either side of the street. But what I was looking for were little places where maybe a half-block or less, there was sidewalk missing, where the city could potentially fill in those gaps and enhance the safety for pedestrians and people in wheelchairs and people pushing strollers, et cetera, get them off the street. And identified a few, but committees, you know, we're kind of taking it slow. I'll actually go out and measure and get pictures and really dive down into these few areas and then work with Darrell and Melanie on getting some prices and then bring those back as official potential projects that we could do. And the last was the two-way downtown street restoration. We had put that on hold while Washington Street between Main and Court was power-washed, the old lines removed, and then repainted. And that work is done now. And it appears that the power washing does a good job of taking off the old paint without too much damage to the asphalt. The asphalt that is under the old paint seems a lot darker than the rest of the street, but that's typical. When asphalt is laid, it's very black, and then in time turns gray, and it's already starting to blend. So, we felt that this could work potentially as a way to restripe our downtown. Were we to move to a two-way conversion? And I'm going to ask Darrell Bysgard, Street Superintendent, if he did indeed get the company who came from Des Moines to do Washington, to get a quote for downtown. Perhaps he's already got that information. We'll take that, and then we'll blend in the cost and maybe have a professional company restripe that first time, because it would be new stripes rather than kind of going over old stripes. We'd really want it to be just a step up from the work. No, no, I'm not saying anything bad about the work our city crews do. They do great work, but for this, we would do maybe a step up from that. And maybe reshaping some nodes to allow for the parking and lose as few spaces or new spaces if possible. So, more on that as it goes, but I just wanted to update everyone on what we're talking about.
So, that's -- it's -- that means it's pretty obvious we're not going to be doing anything this year, which is fine. So, I think over the course of the rest of the year, so that we have something for budgeting time, would be useful so that if we're going to do that, it's done early enough or done in the spring when we generally do the striping, but have everything that we're going to do with public hearings and passing this finally to know exactly what we're going to do. So, if that's the thinking of the committee, to bring something back formally within the next several months.
That's the idea. Get a budget that's much, much less than the last budget we...
Okay, thank you. Is it -- was that your final item?
That's it.
I was going to ask, will any -- counsel have any other questions about the fireworks issue? Because I know we all got calls and emails as well. I think I know I...
There's a lot of them.
Yeah, I think I personally felt that way as well. Anything that's coming off of prohibition is going to be really exciting for the first couple of years and probably die down a little bit. But I know there's a lot of folks in town who have a zero tolerance for them, and that's going to continue to come out. The market is really going to take care of the number of vendors that come next year. Obviously, there were more this year, and if you were out and about, you saw them everywhere in every city in Iowa. So, I, you know, I understand the position of the council. I know with some of the folks, I told them, look, we've -- all we've really added is one day, because, you know, Fourth of July was traditionally a day where we just looked the other way. And there were fireworks that are going off. They were purchased in Missouri likely, but now that there's ease of access, I think that's probably the biggest issue at this point in time, is that more folks have access.
I just saw something recently that several communities use drones to help enforce it.
Yeah, exactly. Find out where they are, because that's part of the frustration, I think, that people have, is they don't know where it's coming from within the neighborhood.
Somebody had a lot of fun running those drones all around.
Until somebody starts shooting things at them.
That's right.
That's right. They are armed. I don't know if you can really aim fireworks, but they are armed.
Yeah. I can confirm that.
You can't confirm or deny that you can. Some people do get good at it because they practice, right, Aaron?
Yeah.
All right, counsel, then.
For one.
So, I did want to just recognize to folks that may be watching the meeting that we, you know, we have had a discussion on this, and this is the direction that we want to take at this time. We'll move then to our environmental and franchise committee report.
Yes, we had a meeting tonight at 6:30. Just two items on the agenda, but just want to make clear that Dave would like to address the council for a few minutes tonight.
You can go to the next meeting.
To the next meeting? Okay. Concerning recycling issues that he's facing with his company. But tonight, the committee addressed two things. We looked at the survey results. If you recall, last fall, we decided to put these large bins out to about 60 individuals or households to test drive the 96-gallon bins that Waste Management is suggesting the city use in the future. And that was concluded this spring, and we have a survey result. I'll just read them to you quickly here. There are just five questions. Most people were satisfied with the 96-gallon bins, 87% satisfaction. About, on the question about whether you would prefer a 64 versus a 96-gallon bin, it was about 45 for the six, 45% for the smaller bin and 55% for the larger bin. Most people would prefer to switch to a bin, 86%, rather than retain their current 233-gallon trash cans. Question four, do they see value in the cart? And the answer was 93% in the affirmative. And the question five, which surprised everybody, would you support a $1 to $2 fee for use of the carts that would include maintenance and lifetime warranty on the, and replacement on the, on the bins? So, 64% were in favor of that, so about 2 to 1, 33% against. So, we had some discussion, and the committee moved to recommend that the city go with the 64-gallon bin as a base cart that everybody would receive, and then they would have a 60-day window to switch out to the larger cart if they so desired. And...
At additional cost?
No, just I'd be at the cost of Waste Management. For the initial installation of carts, we would decide on a couple of locations around town where we could put up the two carts side by side, maybe at the Fire Department, maybe at Hy-Vee, somewhere where there's high traffic or people could access the carts, decide which size cart that they would prefer. But because you could initially choose the larger cart if you liked, but our go-to position would be if you didn't specify the smaller cart. But you could have a 60-day window where you could switch it out to the larger cart if you so desired. So, the motion was passed to make that recommendation to the council, or include it in the contract, actually. And then, there was a motion or discussion about what kind of fee should be charged for use of the bins. And it was decided that $1.50 per month would be the fee charged to residents for use of a bin. And that passed 2 to 1. I was the only dissenting vote. And so, the contract would include that provision as well. And then, there was a little confusion about the base rate for the residential charges in the contract. So, Dave is going to go back to Waste Management, and we're going to get that figured out in the next couple of weeks, I presume. We can meet fairly shortly to resolve that. Other than that, the contract, I think, is done. And the only other issue on the item was recycling. Ron Blair had sent a suggestion about including a mailing that describes the kinds of plastics that are allowed to be recycled, and also that the fact that Connolly is accepting batteries, not sure if it's for free or not, but they're accepting batteries as well. So, we're going to design a flyer and, once a year, get that into a water bill mailing to keep people informed as to the different kinds of plastics that can be recycled with Waste Management. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
If there's any questions, I'm very happy to answer. And the rate discrepancy we're talking about is in the area of 7 cents. So, it's going to be an easy negotiation to get this thing wrapped up for a final rate. Before I go any farther with it, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to have these discussions on the extension of the service contract. We understand that's certainly a privilege of mine to write. We appreciate that. And in terms of a quick comment on the survey, I have a full compilation of the survey results in terms of the ones that were done online and the ones that were either mailed in or brought into the front desk. I'll have those in email form to Aaron tomorrow for distribution. Remarkable response rate. Out of the 60, 63 or 64 testers that you were, that I, you had identified and forwarded to me for information, we got responses from 46 of them. Anything over 15% is considered a satisfactory return. This is excellent. And there were some surprises in it. You sold them, if ever see anyone say, yeah, this would be worth a rate increase. And that was shocking, and I'm more than happy that it was shocking in the manner that it was. So, very happy with the returns, great comments, which we'll be forwarded to for your reading. And we're happy to participate in that. We'll work out the logistics of the cart delivery and the selections. And a question came up in the committee on, you know, going forward, since the cart stays with the residents, what if the single individual moves out of a residence and a family moves in, and they can't live with the 64 and they need a 96? We would give them a 96. We'll make those replacements throughout the duration of the contract. So, again, appreciate it. If there's any questions.
Dave, one of the questions that I've gotten about the fee for the cart is, why is it, why would it be considered in perpetuity? Just that, you know, you pay $18 a year for a cart, and after 10 years, you paid $180 for the cart. It's like when you buy your iPhone, you know, 24 months later, the something comes off the bill.
Sure.
What's the rationale?
The rationale is, we have, number one, the consideration of the capital investment in the carts.
Yes.
And we're talking about another, you know, 4,000 carts, and that's significant. We also have ongoing, since we're going to have a population now between 8,000 and 9,000 carts in town, that's another full-time position to manage that census and population. carts in town, that's another full-time position to manage that, that census and population of carts for replacements, repairs and things like that. So we have ongoing costs to go on just beyond that. Great thing about having it as an ongoing, an ongoing service and an ongoing service fee is it never goes out of warranty. So as long as it's in position, as long as, you know, the duration of that placement, it's good and ready to go. For some reason, if there is a manufacturing defect at any time in it, we replace it. There's no questions asked. We don't do a lot of repairs. We just do replacements. The only thing that, you know, that voids that portion of our proposal is abuse. And periodically, they're abused, but we'll, we'll let you know.
Fireworks involved?
Until you, until you've seen a cart spick it in the side of it, you don't understand what people give you.
What's the cost to Waste Management of a cart?
Well, that would of course be reticent to say in a public hearing, but they are expensive. If we have a contract which requires replacement fees for them, replacement fees start at $95 and go from there. And that's, that's the capital of the cart itself, not the maintenance or the...
Have you used these carts in other cities?
Oh, yes.
Do you have some experience as to how long the cart lasts?
The great thing is we don't have to worry about that since it's the property of Waste Management and we're, we are required to give you a usable cart for the city.
Do you have, what's, what's the length of time typically lasts?
I'm thinking of the city of Street or Illinois. That's one of the ones I've had in carts for the longest. We're in probably the 11th year of their use. Probably a full 30% of them have been replaced rather than be repaired. So I'd say they've got a good 10-year, if not 15. But that's the longest one that I have personal records of.
Is the idea from Waste Management's side, one of the benefits is going to, is it going to be easy for you to collect the trash because you're using these form receptacles? In other words, there's uniformity in form?
There's a, there's an ongoing discussion in operations whether it's easier to pick up a bag and throw it in the truck or to reach out and grab it with an automated or semi-automated system and empty it.
Why does Waste Management want to have the receptacle instead of to pick up the, the bag of trash, for example?
I think there's a lot of benefits for the city. We like it because it's contained. We have all that trash that is contained in one and it's, it's a quicker pickup. Not a quicker pickup, but it's, it's less mess. You're running less risk of something predatory or varmints getting into there and, and spreading it around. I'm not saying that they are 100% windproof, but you don't get a lot of scattering of the contents of the cart on a windy day. And we know what those can be like here in Iowa. So it's great for us in terms of it's one unit, so we're going to empty per location rather than grabbing two. I think the benefits for the city are manifested in the appearance on collection day, the fact that it's not being spread around and the fact that you have dogs, birds and other varmints that are not getting into it. It just, it looks so much better on service day. It's kind of shocking.
I guess my question is, isn't it going to cost Waste Management less money to service these uniform trash receptacles rather than more money to pick up?
Productivity-wise, yes. And then there is the capital expense of getting a truck that is suited to that operation rather than a manual truck. And our current cost on solid waste trucks is just about putting a fire truck on the street. They're well above $350,000 now.
That's either whether you're going to get one that picks up these receptacles or any other...
A greater, a lot greater expense on the ones that are, are the new and automated. Is it easier for us? Yes, it is easier for us.
Does it save you money?
Are there costs involved with it and capital expenditures to get us to that point? Yes, there are.
Does it save you money?
Prob, well, it saves us exposure.
Do you know if it saves you money? The reason I'm asking this is, you're asking the city to pay Waste Management, right, to maintain these uniform receptacles, which is from my, my sense of it, it's going to cost Waste Management less money to maintain them. Waste Management is going to spend less money to pick them up. And so Waste Management is going to make more money. If it's going to make more money, why would they charge the city? That's adding to Waste Management's revenue, to the profit, actually.
The, the collection fees right now cost us nothing to go pick it up in terms of containers. So...
We're talking about the amount you're asking them to pay for what?
As we're operating within the city now, since the containers are either bags or customer-owned equipment. So we have no expense in that now. We are going to add expense with the capital expenditure for the carts and the upgrade for the equipment. Do we gain a little productivity? We certainly do.
Do you know how much?
Is that a quick offset? No, it's not.
Do you know how much?
Not offhand and I, I don't know that I would be willing to, to divulge what we would consider industry-specific and industry-sensitive information in an open meeting.
Well, I guess the situation is, I don't, I don't want to take too much more time, but I guess if Waste Manager is not willing to divulge the information to us, the city, about how much it's going to save them. But they're clear about how much they want us to be charged. I would think that it'd be a fair trade of information that we know what you're getting out of it. Because I know what you're asking the city to get, what you're asking residents to get.
Did we ask contractor to give us their financial statement? How much they make in our job?
I'm not asking for the contractor.
That's exactly what you're doing.
I'm not asking for financial statement. I'm talking about...
You're asking for financial...
I'm talking about just the particular item. That's all. Just the question is, I'm...
The point is getting to the, to the heart of how we go about doing our business, how we calculate the charges for those, that business. And that in any, in almost any setting that we find is going to be considered to be pretty well proprietary information that we don't discharge in, in open meetings.
I just want to be sure that citizens are clear that we're agreeing, I think, we're asking, you're asking us to increase our monthly bill for a service that appears to me, what you're telling me, is going to be, result in a decrease of cost to the provider.
Increase capital cost, cost certainly to start. Long-term, I'd, again, I'd be a little bit reticent to discuss that in an open meeting. Maybe I can do that in a closed meeting with the committee to satisfy those, those inquiries. But do we have a boatload of capital to come up with in order to do this in, or field? Yeah, we do.
Can I interject something here?
Pardon?
Can I interject something here?
Certainly.
The other side of the coin is, if you look at the survey results in detail, quite a few people are pleased with the operation of the cart. It's convenient and that sort of thing. So in a sense, they're buying that convenience and that satisfaction when they're paying Waste Management for that fee.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
Also, that's the other side of the equation.
Yes, I appreciate that. I appreciate. I just, I just wanted to air the issue out, the concern I had. That's all. I appreciate you taking the time.
I appreciate the question.
One more point, question. People can currently get the large bins, 96-gallon bins, right?
Correct.
And what do they, what do you charge them per year to use those bins? Around 80?
Right now, it's either four or four and a quarter a month for the large bin.
96 is $4 per month.
And no initial fee to, to purchase one, or?
No, we don't sell them because...
Okay, so it's about $50 a year.
Yeah.
So four a month, quarterly, 36...
40, run around $40, $50 a year for that.
Forty.
Okay.
So Doug, real quick, with that fifth question on the questionnaire, did it ask a specific dollar amount?
No, it just asked a range. Would you be willing to pay between $1 to $2 per month for use of the bin? And the result was about 2 to 1 in favor of paying a fee for them.
We asked, asked that question in two forms. We said, do you see value in the cart?
Yeah.
Which had a startlingly high response that it did. And then, would you pay specifically in the range of $1 to $2? And that had a, I think, 63 or 64%.
50, around 2 to 1.
Yeah, I knew the questions because I answered yes to four and no to five. So I'm one of those 33 percenters. It was valuable, but I don't want to pay more for it. So...
If we, if we are one of your test subjects, can we keep the cart we have?
Well, we're certainly not going to ask for a police report.
They're not going to take it away.
I think that'd be fine. Let's just leave them in place.
Well, I think we, you know, the other thing, too, is we do have some history with the carts because it's been many years now that we've had the large recycling cart. We did see an increase in recycling of 70% once we introduced those, the, the single stream. And I also, you know, I think a big part of this as well is at the point that you made earlier about what it looks like on collection day. Certainly with, with our curbside bins, it was one experience. And with a closed system, it's, it's another, I think there's value in that. And I, and I appreciate the points that Paul's making because I think they're, you know, they're fair points that a lot, that run through a lot of people's heads when, you know, why is the city making this decision on my behalf for us to increase it based on a system that I could care less one way or the other. But we're going to make a decision in approving a contract based on the bins and based on a good survey information that, you know, that we're still going to get some pushback from it, I can assure you. We'll be dealing with the pushback. So I think that, you know, to really get a good clear sense of what the answers are for citizens. And I think you've provided them. And, and I, I agree with, with Councilman Thompson, too. We don't ask a lot of our contract bidders, how did you do on that contract? So, you know, we, but we, but we do have to understand the costs. We do have to understand, you know, why that, why the system is put together that way.
And in test, and in anticipation of the pushback that, that any service change brings. Because this is one of the most habituated services that the city provides, is your garbage service. That's why we're really happy to have the opportunity to perform a survey and get tests out there. And I was pleasantly shocked with the response rates and, and the responses to the survey in general. So again, thanks for the opportunity. We look forward to...
Dave, I have one more question.
Certainly.
For those who are embracing the cart and anxious to get rid of the existing bins, is there any opportunity for Waste Management to take those away? Like I have the two now that I use, but I also have my test cart.
I'll certainly find out about that.
Find out if there can be a takeaway.
One of the really sensitive things about getting rid of somebody's personal equipment, whether it's a can or anything else, is we need to make sure that there is something that tells us to take that away.
Gotcha. So if it's inside the cart...
Because if we do that on a, on a general basis, it's amazing how many we have to go back and replace.
Can we recycle those?
Can they, I say, can you recycle those?
Recycling, and that's why I asked if, if we have a few minutes at the, the next meeting I attend to talk about recycling. Recycling, curbside recycling is under tremendous unprecedented pressure because of international aspects of it and China refusing to take anymore. And the backup to China just refused to take anymore through the end of this year. It's caused the, the market value for these commodities that we collect to absolutely plummet. It's required us to slow down our sorting lines and add people to get it down to the, the new standards that are required for the, for the contaminants that are within it. And our costs are soaring and the value is plummeting. We've not seen this before. We know that recycling is a cyclical business. This is more of a foundational change. This is a, a great change. China, who refused to take, issued import licenses for, for recycled commodities, especially plastics, for six months is considering bringing them back to life if there's less than one-half of 1% contaminants in it. But they also let us know at the same time, by 2021, we're going to accept none of it. So everything's changing quickly. And I, I'll bring back a report on that.
Okay. And what's our timeline for the contract, Doug?
Beginning of August at the latest, I'm hoping.
Okay. All right. Dave, thank you for coming. Appreciate your comments tonight. Anything else from the committee?
No.
Aaron, administrative report.
I, I did not get out my report to you last week, basically because I was on vacation. So I did give you a copy of it tonight. If you have any questions about that, that's fine. Obviously, being gone for a week on vacation, I don't have a lot for you at this point for this evening. So...
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Aaron at this time? Now, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Man, I don't want to...